I'll call this meeting a Fairfield County Council order Tuesday, May 29, 2018, 6:00 PM. First item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council now approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven to zero. The agenda is approved as presented. Next invocation by Councilmember Robinson, please.
Let us bow our head. Heavenly Father, we come together today to say thank you for allowing us for another meeting for the betterment of Fairfield County. We actually ask you bless the decisions that we've made, the decisions that we haven't made. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting, May 14, 2018. Do we have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council approved the minutes from the regular meeting, May 14, 2018, as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven to zero. Those minutes are approved. Next is public presentations. We have one for tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Ruth as the district representative for Mr. Sidney Squirewell's 100th birthday. Congratulations. Letter of congratulations.
I'm not going to read this whole thing, but I don't want you to stand up that long. This is mighty nice. On Monday, May 21st, Mr. Sidney Squirewell turned 100 years old. And I've known him all my life. He's known me longer than that, but I was too little to know him then. But just a brief overview of this, he served in World War II. He served St. Mark's Baptist Church for many, many years. He's got seven, all his children are still living. He's got grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and great-grandchildren, two men in his name. He's going to live 10 more years, because then his wife will be 100, too. She'll be here. One of his quotes is, "If you can't be happy, you are in deep trouble." That's very good. Now, I want to tell you all a real quick story, too, and I'm not going to hold this up too long. But he's been coming in the store, my dad and my granddad and my...I don't have them. But anyway, so we got charge accounts on the counter. He came in and asked us how sharp he is. A year or two ago, he drove up to the store. He comes in there, said, "Dan, I want to catch that little ticket I got on the counter." So I tear it out, and I hadn't standing at home. He'd start reaching in the wallet, and I said, "You want this ticket, or you want me to tear it up?" He said, "I don't need it. Go ahead and tear it up." Again, I go ahead and tear it up. I threw it in the trash can. I thought he was going to fight me. He turned around. I said, "You're late." He's sharp. That's how sharp he is. So he played me. He played me. We had a lot of fun. I've just proud of him on him all my life.
If you all don't want to stay for this morning meeting, you can go. Or you can stay.
Thank you. We'll give you an opportunity to get out the door. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. God bless you.
We have two speakers tonight. First, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on Chamber of Commerce.
Randy Bright, District 1, Ridgeway. Boy, that was a tough act to follow. Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I want to thank council for being diligent to resurrect the chamber from its brief death by ego, or whatever you want to call it. And thank you for that. It is critical that we support our Chamber of Commerce, because that's a hub for our local business, small businesses. And we can recruit all the big businesses that you want, but the small businesses generate, in the long run, more jobs, more longevity, and more stability to our entire community, both from a fiscal and economic standpoint. So thank you for your support of the Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to see you expand that support a little more. And first thing is ensure that you put forth a Chamber of Commerce events on your Facebook page, the county's Facebook page. That's critical, and it's a critical tool. We're using it more, but we need to use it even more yet. And the chamber has their own, but being on the county's Facebook page helps promote these critical events. And I would hope, you know, there's a big event coming up, June 14th, the Ag Farm Dinner Event, and the whole Ag Farm thing. I would hope that everyone up here and everyone out there and on TV, et cetera, will come out and support our small businesses. Because so our small businesses go through the Chamber of Commerce, so goes the entire community. And that's a great start for everyone to really promote it from the county's end, everyone to really attend it, and show, you know, a lot of things have happened in this county in the last couple of years. A lot of negative things. We'll start with VC Summer. And I think Bertha Goins has given a couple elegant speeches about, "This is the time to show unity. This is the time to work together. This is the time to build our community together." And what a great continuation of those speeches and those thoughts would be for June 14th, would everybody come out and support the Ag Farm Table Event. So just to note, support small businesses through the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on the hospital.
Good evening. We should have called the meeting off as soon as that man walked out of here on a high note. 100 years old. My God. Wow. I am totally impressed. And a nice guy, too, you know? That doesn't happen too often. Okay, make it quick. I don't want to waste the three minutes, because now I realize how precious time is. I could lift a 99. Who knows? Maybe some of you don't want me to do that. Okay, so bottom line here is the hospital, Randy just filled me in. I'm not going to waste any more time on the hospital. Thank you, Billy Smith, for your concerns with the hospital, all of you. Think we've got enough, and we've figured out what to do with that. I want to, just while I'm up here, I got two seconds, I want to say something a little off the cuff. You know, on the weekend, Memorial Day, I had some time to reflect on my life and things that go on in general. And I was sending out an email, and I got a response from Patty. So let me just say this. Here's a woman, I don't know her very well, but I like her, because she answered my email on a holiday, and when I told her not to do that, she said, "I love my job." That says something about a person, and I respect that tremendously. And I think that little effort, or that large effort, deserves to be noted, that when people who work for a living and give you that extra effort, that's pretty damn good. I mean, really, that really is. And I'm, we should all be thankful. We have some people like that working in the county. So that being said, I'll just shut up and sit down and wait for my next chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes Segment 1.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Next, public hearings. We have two tonight. We'll open the first one at 6:09 PM, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from RD1 to B1 of 150.32 acres owned by Sharp Recreational Properties. Applicant is Fairfield County Council. Tax map number 203-00-01-157-000. Property is located at 3248 US Highway 21 South Ridgeway, South Carolina. Did anyone sign to speak, Ms. Davis?
Yes, we have one speaker, Mr. Greg Wicker.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak and be heard. I own 34.14 acres that shares a boundary with this property, about 1,000-foot boundary. And that boundary consists of a parcel that used to be 24 acres that was Cedar Rock subdivision. That property is zoned residential and has a deeded restriction that it will remain deeded residential. So I don't know if you were aware of that, because that was a subsequent add-on to the original 150 acres. So with the deeded restriction, I don't know if he's planning on carving out and making a boundary for the zoning change. If you hadn't figured it out already, I'm against the zoning change, and mostly for noise. If you're unaware, Mr. Sharp has placed a venue-type wedding party place at the farm, utilizing the former horse barn. They remodeled it, and creates a lot of noise in the region. So we've got noise from DJs on a PA, a lot of people consuming alcohol, hooting and hollering, and loud music there. And I purchased my property for hunting, and so that's pretty much extinguished my possible use of the property when they have these parties there. So, and to me, when they have parties and they pay, you know, it seems like they're using it for a commercial purpose at that point, which is not zoned for. So if someone's going to circumvent the rules and do things anyway, that makes me wonder what other things they're going to do in the future. So, but nonetheless, I'll keep my comments short here to three minutes, and I'll just go on record to say I'm against the zoning change for those reasons. Thank you all.
Thank you.
No one else signed to speak?
Right. At 6:12 PM, we'll take a motion at this time to close the public hearing. It's been moved and properly seconded that council now close this public hearing. Those in favor? Those opposed? 6:12, a public hearing is closed. We have another public hearing for tonight. We'll open this one at 6:12 PM, an ordinance to regulate construction and development of flood hazard areas in the unincorporated areas of Fairfield County, and to repeal ordinance number 586. Ms. Davis, did anyone sign to speak on this?
No one signed to speak.
Okay. At 6:13 PM, we'll take a motion to close that public hearing. It's been moved and properly seconded that this public hearing be closed at 6:13 PM. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven to zero. That public hearing is closed. We're now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Item A is second reading of ordinance 698. This is an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from RD1 to B1 of 150.32 acres owned by Sharp Recreational Properties. Applicant is Fairfield County Council. Tax map number 203-00-01-157-000. Property is located at 3248 US Highway 21 South Ridgeway, South Carolina. We have a motion?
No move.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council give ordinance 698 second reading. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Pauli?
I would like an explanation for the change. I'm aware that it's been operating as a wedding venue, party venue for a period of time as a RD1. So what's the reason for the BD1?
Mr. Councilman, as you can see, that the request is actually coming from the county, not from the owner on this property, which is unusual. And that's because we found that we had allowed this use to go in error and basically allowed a non-conforming use with the zoning. So we're trying to bring the zoning back to what it should have been when we allowed the person to move forward with this. And this came to our attention, again, based on another zoning request that was made. And this particular property was used as a justification for that other zoning request, and we found out an error had been made on our part earlier. So we're just correcting that error.
Anyone else? There were a couple other folks had raised their hands.
Can you answer my question?
Okay. All right. Seeing no other discussion, we'll take a vote at this time. Those in favor of the rezon? Those opposed? Seven to zero. Second reading is provided to ordinance number 698. Second reading on ordinance number 699. This is an ordinance to regulate construction and development of flood hazard areas in the unincorporated areas of Fairfield County, and to repeal ordinance number 586. Do we have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded that second reading be provided to ordinance number 699. Is there any discussion? All right, I'd like to ask if we could just have a brief explanation. I know there was a little bit at the last meeting, but since it was first reading, it was stated that wasn't really prepared. So just wanted to see if there was any other information could be shared on this.
I will defer to our Development Director, Mr. Chris Clausen, to explain this one.
I'm sorry. Good evening, council. I do have a slideshow. If Mr. Anderson could pull it up. Basically, in summary, the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance regulates development in the flood hazard areas. So it's, if we can pull it up, that'd be great. What is it? It regulates in the flood prone areas? So any development must be in compliance with these regulations. So anything, obviously, that exists right now has already gone through. This ordinance in particular has basically been on the books for a number of years. This only came about because FEMA went through, and they've revised this document that is called the Flood Insurance Study. And what they've done is really updated the roads, as well as the municipalities. However, for some reason, they didn't catch Jenkinsville being incorporated. But nonetheless, they've also updated the actual base flood elevation in a lot of areas, especially along watery. It was undetermined at the time when they first did the countywide assessment in 2011. And now it's, they've had much more detail in that area. So predominantly regulating development in those areas and allowing people as well to have a flood insurance policy. If we don't pass this, if we don't regulate the development in the flood prone areas, they cannot have an insurance policy. So it's a protective measure for the county, as well as all of its residents. And really, this update is just because they've updated this study and the maps associated with it. And our ordinance needs to reference those maps and the date of adoption as well, so...
Question?
Yes, Ms. Goins.
Now, will Jenkinsville area be captured in that?
We can see if we can get a, yes, the data will be there. Will the municipal boundaries? They're not at this time. Does that affect insurance? No, it does not. It's just a matter of, is that municipality recognized? Not at this time.
All right. And where did we get those new maps from?
This is FEMA, so the Federal Emergency Management Agency.
I just wanted to clarify. I didn't want anybody to think we drew the maps.
No, no, we did not. This is a long process as well. This is really about a year and a half. They've gone through a number of public hearings as well. And then the clerk has the copies of all the maps. They're not very user-friendly in the paper form, but they do have a digital map viewer that you can go to, and you can actually type in your address and see where the different flood areas are. So go online. Don't use the old maps. That's hard.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote on second reading. Those in favor? Those opposed? Second reading by vote of seven to zero is given to ordinance 699. We're now down to first reading by title only, no discussion, ordinance number 701. This is an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from R1 to RD1 of four acres owned by Edward and Bonnie Sanders. Applicant is Edward and Bonnie Sanders. Tax map number 093-00-00-026-000. Property is located at 1783 Durham Place Road. We have a motion?
No move.
It's been moved and properly seconded to provide first reading to ordinance number 701. Those in favor? Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, ordinance number 701 is given first reading. We're now down to item D. This is a resolution, number 2018-04. Resolution amending, restating, and ratifying the organizational rules and bylaws of the Fairfield County Council. Do we have a motion?
No move.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council passed resolution number 2018-04. Any discussion?
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Traut.
Did anything change on this document from the last?
Yes, I was going to ask if we could just to get a brief staff explanation. This went around in email to everybody, but just wanted to make sure that everybody understood what it was. So if you would, Mr. Taylor?
What we're doing with this resolution is we're changing our bylaws to also add in the Chamber of Commerce. There are a number of boards and commissions that council appoints a member to, and this will be adding in the Chamber of Commerce. You all would be appointing a member to that board now also.
Any other discussion, questions, comments on that? All right, those in favor of passing the resolution? Those opposed? Seven to zero. Resolution 2018-04 is approved. We're now down to board and commission minutes. We'll do all of these together unless there are questions or comments, any specific one. Chamber of Commerce, Library Commission, Hospital Board, Disabilities and Special Needs Board, and the Aeronautics Commission. Do we have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council approved these minutes as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Those opposed? Seven to zero. Those minutes are approved. Board and commission appointments, hospital board, reappointment of Mr. Clarence Gilbert to serve for District 6. Do we have a motion?
No move.
It's been moved and properly seconded to reappoint Mr. Clarence Gilbert, serving for District 6, to the Fairfield Memorial Hospital Board. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, Mr. Clarence Gilbert is reappointed to the hospital board representing District 6. No old business, no new business. County Administrator Report, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, just a couple of items. The quarterly financial reports, I think council should have gotten a copy of those. If you have any questions, please come back, and we'll try to clarify those. But I think everything is in order on that particular report. The next item we have, we do have something that's been moved forward from Administration and Finance Committee for an approval, a recommendation for approval, a request from the town of Ridgway under the Municipal Assistance Grant Program that the county has now. They have a sidewalk program that they have put, or a project that they have put forward. They have moved forward with a TAP grant, which they have been awarded, and it's a total project for $500,000 with the TAP, which is the Transportation Alternatives Program from DOT. They have awarded them $400,000. But they do have to come up with a 20% match for this $500,000 project, which leaves $100,000. The town has put in $11,400. They've gotten $43,000 from CTC, and they've asked for the balance of $45,600 from the county. It has been before. The Finance Committee, they have recommended to full council, and this would cover the cost of 1.7 miles of sidewalk in Ridgway.
No move, Mr. Chairman?
Right. It's been moved and properly seconded that council approved the request from the town of Ridgway pursuant to ordinance 691 toward $45,600 toward the Sidewalk and Safety Improvement Plan. Do we have any discussion? All right, I'd like to ask if I could, I don't know if we've gotten this information or not, but what is the target deadline on when the sidewalks would actually be put in? And I know there's some more work to be done in terms of where the sidewalks would go, because when this was first put together, the prices weren't where they are today. You know, with all the construction going on, obviously, this kind of stuff goes up. So that changes some things. But I just wonder what the date is?
With my experience with TAP grants and the way they work, they've changed them. In the past, they've called them different things, IST and T21 and things like that, that DOT, when they give you money, they would give you the grant, and then you would go forth and bid the project. Well, they don't do it that way anymore. They have pulled that back. What they do now is they award you the money, and then they pull it back into their bidding process, and then they actually bid it out and put it in the projects that they do in the next coming year, which means it's going to take you about two years to get the project done. Because again, they take it back in, it goes under their bidding process, their construction process. So you're looking at best 18 months to 24 months.
Okay. And this funding additionally, and I think I know the answer to this, but just to clarify, would be awarded out of the current fiscal year's budget, correct?
Right, that is correct.
Okay. What will we have left in that fund, do you know?
We have $300,000. I think we've awarded $90,000, and this would be another $45,000.
Okay. All right. Seeing no further discussion, those in favor of the request?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, the request is approved. $45,600 to town of Ridgway, the Sidewalk Enhancement and Safety Improvement Plan. Next is the Clerk to Council's report. We have none. Second public comment session. Ms. Davis?
We have two speakers. First, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, just an opinion.
You'll have to forgive me, because I have nothing written, and I'm kind of old and feeble when it comes to thinking of the top of my head. But let me just talk about sidewalks, $400, $500,000. Town of Ridgway, go ahead and give it to them. They got a town, they got lots of people. It's a wonderful idea. Jenkinsville, they just increased the sidewalk to nowhere, to going nowhere further. I don't know how that works, or why that works, or how that happens. I wish you had some control over it, but it's amazing. Just totally amazing. Okay. Just wanted to bring that to the public, that you all know that there's a sidewalk that goes to nowhere, and they've added more of that nowhere to go nowhere else for hundreds of thousands of dollars. So ridiculous. You know, you should be prepared. I'm sorry. Because as things happen at night when we're talking, I'm saying to myself, let me just talk about Billy real quick. You got to give this guy kudos. It's almost 6:30. We'll be out of here in five minutes. I remember the days I sat here so long my legs ached, and nothing got accomplished. So congratulations. I appreciate the effort that you take to speed it along, and I don't want to waste any more time. But, you know, as I was coming over tonight, a squirrel jumped out in the road. I saw him. I was doing 50 miles an hour, and I didn't touch the brake. But squirrels are smart. There's another squirrel, an older squirrel, standing next to him, yelled out to him, "Do the right thing. Freeze! Don't jump back and go out. Just freeze, and I'll go right over him." And that's what I did. I looked back, and he was still frozen, not flattened, but frozen. So, you know, it's a matter of us doing the same thing. We need to look at the things that come up on the road and opportunities that happen to us, and we need to think about what's the right move. And we have a lot of money coming into the county, and I think that wise men and women need to contribute to that thought process about exactly what we're doing for the future. Because in 10 years from now, when I want to be close to this guy's age, I want to look back and go, "Wow, they really did something pretty good." So that's what you need to do every night you're here and every day you come in, start thinking about the future, not about today or the next five minutes. What's going to happen in 10 years from now? What's this county going to look like? And with your help and your guidance and your insight, you won't be that flattened squirrel. We'll actually have something growing and doing, and I hope that really happens. Thank you, Billy. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright, Spaghetti Western.
Randy Bright, District 1, Ridgway. Thank you, Patty, for reading that correctly. The good. You guys need to toot your own horn about the progress at the industrial center. Went by there a week or so ago, sprucing up with the trees, roads sprucing up, and infrastructure going in. This can only help, you know, Jeff talked about the future. That's the kind of thing that's going to help and ensure our future. So well done, then. You guys need to toot your own horn about that. It's real, that's progress. That's progress. Thank you for that. The bad. We still don't have infrastructure to the mega site. And without infrastructure, the mega site is no site. So we need to get, and that's coming from the state. So we need to keep putting the friendly persuasion, pressure, whatever you want to call it, on our local delegation. That's millions of dollars in land sitting idle, not doing anybody any good in this county. And of course, and I guess the infamous FFC, some of that money went to that. So that makes it even more of an incentive to right that wrong. Let's continue to press that button. And then we get to the ugly. And for me, ugly is a matter of perception. It's still, our recreation is not to the level... of perception. It's still, our recreation is not to the level that it can actually do much to help the citizens improve their health, improve both mental and physical health. We have some things. We have small groups that participate in some activities. But we have empty buildings without many exercise features to it. You know, we have basketball courts that have one end to it, and we have trails, lots of trails. And for a little bit of an investment, and I've mentioned this before, we could have strength training, stationary strength training equipment installed on our trails for very little money, and that everybody can do. Not everybody can do a pull-up, but everybody can do a pull-up standing up at an angle. And that's just one example. These are all just small examples of what we can do to help improve the physical being of our county with very little investment in our recreation. And that's how to leverage it. I don't need to go through our county's health statistics or our statistics about not having access to physical exercise equipment. Stationary equipment on our trails is a great start. And also promote our wide bikeways. We have the widest bike lanes of anybody in the Midlands. Thanks.
Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Davis. We're now down to county council time. Do any council members have anything to share? Mrs. Goins?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good evening. I'm going to bounce off of what just happened with Mr. Ruff and the gentleman that's 100 years old, and I'm going to bring it back into District 4. We're a county, but I'm going to bring this back to District 4. When I think of that area and how it started and the people that started it, the people that invested in it and how they worked together, I don't usually use these words, black and white or African-American, but since that's the language, and I'm going to use it. Black and white helped build that community. Where we're doing the project, Martin's Blue Moon was like a hub attraction. He's talking about activity, a hub attraction in Jenkinsville. Yarborough stole from 215 down the end of it, all the way up in 34 up to Thompson Center. Merchants and people worked together for the benefit. They understood what community was all about. Nobody tried to overpower anybody. Nobody tried to take over anything. They understood community. They worked together. Mr. Ruff says about credit. Because of those people, a lot of families ate. Because of those people, a lot of families had homes. Because of those people, a lot of families, the generation now benefited from something that they didn't even do. But now at this point, they want to take over and act like they're doing something when there's actually nothing for them to do but get out of the way and let those that really care about the community continue to do the good work. We have some good people in the community. I am sick of people riding on the coattail of racism. It's not racism that causes the problem. It's the mindset that causes the problem. And when I say black and white, Mr. Yarborough, a lot of people would have probably went to jail if it hadn't been for him speaking up for them and a lot of other people. Mr. Silas McMicken, we talk about VC Summers, we talk about SCNG. The majority of the people on western Fairfield got jobs with SCNG because he vouched for them, because he gave a word for them. He spoke, if you were willing to work and work hard, he spoke up for you. And because of his efforts, because of him caring about people, no matter what people say, he didn't do this or he didn't do that, he helped build the community. And because of that, many homes are in Fairfield County. Many people had cars, and they had a good life, a better life, because of his action, having concern for community. The water company, it was a struggle to get that into the community. But it was a struggle of the older people, the seniors, people that cared, young people that cared about community and understood what community was about. And they sacrificed. They went through a lot to do that. And we have a board that cared about community. Anybody that wanted to could get water. It was not a false situation. It was not our own situation until the enemy of evil fell in, took over, and took it down, and that's where we are now. 20 years of hate and bitterness, it should be enough for Fairfield County. And we have, and the other thing is that I have a problem with. Fairfield County said 43% African-American. I don't know what that means, but I can guarantee you, all 40% of those people don't have the same mindset as that 1% that's trying to damage everything that comes up. I can guarantee you that because I'm one of them, and I don't have that mindset. My mindset is, if I can't do it, get out of the way and let somebody else can. If I can't do it, let somebody else try to do it. Life changes in cycles. To every season, there is a purpose. And one group come along, one generation comes along, and they build and they do things. And then others come from that, and they're supposed to build and do good things and do great things to help those that were behind them and those that are coming after them. That's community building. That's what Fairfield County is about. And I'm going to say it is about because that 1% is not going to stop the good that we are going to do. This annexation thing, I don't even, I've asked, and people have been calling me, calling, what's the purpose? There is no purpose other than a scam to set up as what I can get for me. When I sat on the board and that company down there brought River Campground, the man came. He didn't ask for more water. He simply asked for a minute change of information. It was just a restructuring of the water uses that he had. He wasn't using all that he had. He didn't ask for more water. It's just ratification. When they started out, a correction, when they started out, he didn't have anything to compare to of his water uses. So he came back. He says, now that I do, we have some sites in place, and we set some up, so I want to do phase two. So I need to just recorrect this on paper. It's done all the time. Check with the engineers. But before people would check to get the truth, somebody says, no, I'm not going to do it because there's nothing in it for me. When an adult sat at the table and asked me, but why are you pushing so hard for him? What's in it for you? That says something about them. You know what's in it for me? Doing the right thing for anybody. That's what's in it for me. And I'm going to stand against the annexation. I'm going to encourage people not to vote for it. There's no purpose in it. It's going to damage the community. We're divided enough as it is. And to be divided by just ego, and I heard that word again tonight, ego, don't have any good intentions. This county is going to grow. And I'm going to use this as an example. And I'm going to try to make it brief because I'm really ticked off about it. And people consider me probably just an easygoing person. I'm not that easygoing person. I'm ticked off about evil in the community. We did fine until 20 years ago, a snake came into the community and poisoned the community. And I'm going to leave it at that one. There was a situation in Scripture says that a generation, they were disobedient, and before the other generation could come forth, they died out. Sometimes people have to be moved before the right thing can happen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Goins. Anyone else? All right. Yes, Mr. Robinson.
Just two things. I just wanted to comment on Mr. Bright's. I agree that recreation isn't where it should be, but it is better than what it was. And I'm sure that we are looking to push things around here a little further. Also, tomorrow, November 30th, we're having our second Small Town Rural Multi-Model Networks Guide Workshop here in the council chambers. It'll be from 3:00 to 5:00. All the public is invited to attend to give their input for Walkable Windsboro. A little something else that you touched on.
May 30th?
I'm sorry. May 30th, tomorrow.
Yes.
I'm thinking about eating, I guess. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Anyone else? All right. At this time, we'll look to go into executive session. We've got four items for tonight. A is a legal matter, so update on litigation against SCNA, SCNG, in reference to the abandoned VC Summer New Nuclear Project. B is a proposed contractual matter. This is discussion regarding the potential purchase of real property identified as Fairfield County TMS number 126-03-01-001-000. Item C is a legal matter. We'll receive information regarding pending litigation from a former employee and an economic development update and discussion of potential contracts. We have a motion to go into executive sessions for those reasons.
No move.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Council now go into executive session for the purposes as stated. Any discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, council is now in executive session.